Recognize them. Parks and Rec homeschool program.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. If I could have everyone's attention, if everyone would take their seat, please. We're going to get started. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, April 15, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with the invocation given by Pastor Leonard Himes. He will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Our Father, we're grateful tonight is we come together, Lord, and county government to conduct, Lord, with your leading, the business that needs to be attended to. So tonight I ask for your power and your wisdom. And, Lord, we invite you into this place to lead and guide hearts and minds in what takes place to see. Bless all those out now, Lord, working and giving us protection and safety. Help us in this meeting tonight, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen.
Meeting to order. We have the following announcements. The following item will be removed from the agenda. Resolution approving the award for Design Services of Jonesboro Road Widening, District Two and District Five, Splot Six. That item is being removed from the agenda and will address at a later time. Also, we're going to have a session regarding property acquisition or litigation. Next, we're going to have a proclamation. Proclamation declaring April 13, 2025 through April 19 of 2025 as Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Henry County. Amber?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. It is an incredible honor to present to the public today a proclamation declaring April 13, 2025 through April 19, 2025 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Henry County, whereas emergencies can occur at any time, requiring prompt action from police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when emergencies arise, the swift and effective response of these services is critical to the protection of life and property. And whereas the safety and effectiveness of our public safety personnel depend greatly on the quality and accuracy of information provided by citizens through E-911. And whereas Henry County's communications officers are the first and most critical point of contact for our citizens in times of crisis, serving as the vital link between the public and emergency services. And whereas communications officers are essential in supporting our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical responders by monitoring their activities via radio, relaying crucial information, and ensuring their safety in the field. And whereas the contributions of communications officers are fundamental to the successful apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the effective treatment of patients in need. And whereas these dedicated telecommunications personnel demonstrate compassion, composure, understanding, and the highest level of professionalism while performing their essential duties. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, does hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through April 19, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Henry County in recognition and honor of the men and women whose commitment, diligence, and professionalism improve the well-being of citizens and play a vital role in keeping our community safe this 15th day of April, 2025. Thank you.
We have telecommunications here to take a picture with us. If we could have them to come forward, please. Thank you. It might be. Next item is presentation by Right Side Health in collaboration with Henry County Fire Rescue and E-911.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. This presentation, we're going to have Chip talk to you in a minute about the tele-med program that we use in 911. It helps us so that for non-emergent calls that are classified that way based on a list from our medical director, we can directly connect citizens of the county to doctors. And we have people now calling us directly saying, can you just transfer me to a doctor? Everyone that calls, they have the option that if they want an ambulance, they get an ambulance. But if they would prefer to talk to a doctor immediately, they can talk to a doctor. We want them to... Chief Petit is also going to tell you some of the statistics, but then Chip is going to explain to you the totality of the program because we want you to understand how awesome this program is for Henry County.
Good evening, everyone. So why does this partnership, this innovative partnership work for the residents and visitors of Henry County? So Henry County is going to run approximately 40,000 calls for service this year. Of those, about 80% of those are for EMS, Emergency Medical Services. Piedmont Henry Hospital is going to see approximately 95,000 patients in the ER this year. So as of April 14, we've ran right at 12,000 calls, which actually equates to roughly 15,000 total unit responses just to medical call types alone. So the dispatchers that we just celebrated, they actually do what's called Emergency Medical Dispatch as soon as someone calls 911. Of those calls through that Emergency Medical Dispatch system, 12% are deemed high acuity calls, are delta and echo calls. 60% are deemed omega, alpha, and bravo, or are low acuity call types. And as she stated, those are deemed low acuity or high acuity call types by our medical director, Dr. Charles Evans. These numbers are continuing to trend equitable to those of 2024. This is a lot of resources and unit hour utilization that's made unavailable during our peak call times on those low acuity call types. We are the zoned ambulance provider, Henry County Fire Rescue, per official code of Georgia Title 31, Chapter 11. And our regulations that govern EMS and ground ambulances can be found at the rules and regulations of the state of Georgia, 511-9-2, Emergency Medical Services. Our EMS system zoning plan states, "When a designated ambulance provider receives a call for emergency medical services through a P-SAP or 911 or a private call from within our designated zone, it is the responsibility of the designated ambulance provider to respond to the emergency." It's important to understand that we, Henry County, and our medical director, Dr. Charles Evans, dictate what our response is. There is no law or rule that states we actually have to send an ambulance, nor is there a rule or law that states we have to actually transport that patient. The rule only states that when a patient requires transport, we as licensed medical providers can make that decision as we perform an assessment on every patient. And now, limiting our liability with our body-worn camera system, first in the state of Georgia to use, so that we actually have a record of the incident and assessment on every patient. So our collaboration with our medical director, our communication center, and Right Site, we're actually ensuring that we get the patient to the right level of care and getting the right resources to the patient while keeping our resources available for those high acuity call types and fires as they come in. We allow in our resources to include ER to be available for those call types while also being fiscal stewards with a cost savings with this service of over $100,000 annually from the previous provider. So if you would, please allow me to introduce Chip Walls, Right Site's Regional Director of BMS Partnership, and he'll actually walk us through a call.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for welcoming me to this meeting as well into your community and fire department. It means a lot to us to be able to be a part of your community. So Right Site Health, our focus is on preserving critical resources for the community for the most critical patients when they're in need. First thing we're going to do is kind of go through what we are and how we work. So with Right Site Health, we integrate into your dispatch center as well as your fire department. And we are able to preserve those critical emergency, critical resources for critical emergencies. So how it works is, we'll run down the dispatch line first. When you initiate dispatch, call 911, the telecommunicator will triage the call, go through, and offer Right Site to the patient that's calling. If it does meet those EMD codes, we will then be connected by the dispatch center to a ER doctor and a navigator. So our ER doctors are board certified. They all have worked mostly in Georgia. They're experienced ER doctors. Our navigators are non-clinical, and what they focus on are non-clinical or social issues. So after they're connected, what we go through is what we call in-network navigation. We'll work through clinical solutions, which could include getting a patient to urgent care, getting them to a clinic, providing telehealth without them ever having to leave the comfort of their home, getting to the, getting them set up with a primary care provider, or even dealing with behavioral health issues. Social solutions, what we're calling non-clinical issues or social determinants of health, include transportation, prescription assistance, over-the-counter delivery for Tylenol, ibuprofen, if that's what their situation needs. We can also work with food insecurity, housing. These are the core reasons why some people choose to initiate 911 versus going to these other options on their own. These are national numbers. Right Site has had over 12,000 activations. When people do call Right Site, 91% of, when people are connected with Right Site, 91% of the time, they're willing to at least talk to one of our physicians. When we're talking about redirection rate, we're talking about when a patient is referred to us, we're able to redirect 79% of those patients away from the ER, preserve critical resources for the community. We do a survey after every encounter. Our average rate is 9.7 out of 10. Patients absolutely love the services we're able to provide, sufficient, and they're able to stay in the comfort of their home in most cases. So when we're working through these situations, the average time to release is seven minutes. That's a average between field and dispatch. When we're in dispatch, we're looking at about two minutes from the time the telecommunications officer contacts us to have them back available, ready to take another call. In the field, it's a little bit longer. Takes anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes for able to get that unit back in service, ready to respond to an emergency call. Data we've looked at says for every 10 successful Right Side activations, it's like adding an ambulance back to your community, giving that back critical resources. This is Henry County data so far. This is starting in January. So so far, we've had 337 total activations between field and dispatch. Our average redirection rate's been 65%. And we've been able to navigate 176 patients away from the emergency room. As far as numbers split between dispatch and field, 271 have come from dispatch. We've had a 60% redirection rate. Average release time has been two minutes. Field initiated, we've done this 66 times, 86% redirection rate, and average release time is 15 minutes. It takes a little bit longer in the field just because they're working through an assessment with the physician, making sure we're able to get them transferred over and get them to Right Side of Care. This is basically our tagline. This is how we initiate a conversation about having a patient come over to Right Site. We ask, would you like to talk to an ER doc right now? We ask that simple question because most of the time when somebody's initiating 911, their ultimate goal is to talk to an ER doc. We're able to provide that right now without delay, keeping patients from being on the wall in the emergency room for hours at a time and tying up your resources. This is a example of how we navigate a patient. This particular example goes off of a field activation. So we start off with a 911 call. After that, EMS crew is dispatched and they arrive on scene. Once they arrive, they perform their clinical assessment, just as they normally would, and they can determine this is a lower acuity patient. After that, we ask, would you like to talk to an ER doc right now? About 91% of the time, they are absolutely willing to talk to an ER doc because that is their ultimate goal. The ER doc and the navigator work together, and they have a telehealth visit with the EMS provider, taking their assessment and coming up with a care plan. The patient consents to the treatment plan that they came up with, the EMS crew is released. Again, the average time in Henry County is about 15 minutes from the time they initiate contact with us until their release is about 15 minutes. That can be significantly longer if they're transported in the ER. And nature of the healthcare system these days, a lot of times you get hung up on a wall waiting to be assigned to bed. So after that happens, the navigator will work through whatever issues it may be. It may be getting into urgent care. It may just be a telehealth visit on site. The navigator will then arrange for round-trip transport. That includes transport to urgent care facility if needed. We can also get out to a clinic or a pharmacy. Next thing we're going to do is schedule PCP appointments. That is to work them, work out the situation where they're not having to access the 911 system in the future to get the care they need. Navigator's then going to connect the patient to a health plan program. If they don't have insurance, work through that situation. They're going to follow up for up to 14 days as well to make sure we're working through these social issues that are preventing the patient from accessing primary care on their own. This is just a general patient care experience. I'm not going to run through this entire program as we just kind of went through it. But basically what happens is you've got a patient began to feel sick the night before, woke up with severe sore throat. She reported head and body aches, and her five-year-old son had also developed a cough. Patient was home alone with her children and lacked transportation. She did have car seats available for her children. So the care, after the initial assessment was deemed non-emergent, EMS activated Right Site to find non-ER care options for the patient. EMS assisted Right Site doctor with a real-time virtual exam, including positioning the camera to visually inspect the patient's throat. This is Right Site and the ER doc collaborated with EMS to examine the patient, including a throat exam, recommended in-person urgent care, shared advice on managing the condition when returning home. This is what the navigator did. They initiated the patient call. They provided guidance and expectations, gathered patient, social determinant of health barriers, found and scheduled in-network nearby affordable agent, urgent care appointment for the patient, arranged for round-trip, non-ambulance transportation of the patient or children to an urgent care visit. They completed a 24-hour follow-up, first urgent care visit, and were able to DoorDash their prescriptions directly to their home. That is just a example of how we're able to provide care without having a patient transported to the ER. With that said, that's going to be the end of my presentation. I'd like to turn it back over to Chief Petit.
One key takeaway that I would like for you to know is that this service is available to insured as well as uninsured. It's available to the entire community, no matter their insurance status. So this service will get them to their primary care provider, will get them to an urgent care, will actually get medications delivered if a child has a fever. They'll actually Uber eats that Tylenol to them. If they have insurance, great. If not, they'll still receive the same service. There is no differentiation between the service.
Awesome. Commissioner Wilson?
I have a question.
He answered the question, the non-insured insured. So that's the only question I had. Thank you all.
Commissioner Robbins?
Thank you, team, for bringing this because this is something that's different above other communities. So Tamika and our new guy here, thank you guys so very much. That's my friend. But it's important that we make sure, as you stated, that regardless with the insurance or not, everyone will receive medical care. And our seniors especially. I do have a question. So when it comes to seniors that live by themselves and are, it's kind of hard for them to, you know, certain things if family members are not there, to be able to speak to you in a clear way, how do you handle those situations when it comes to our seniors?
So with seniors specifically, sometimes there can be challenges with communication just based on aging, you know, issues with being able to hear. We do our best to communicate with them through the medics on scene, get their assistance. Now, for them to utilize our services, they do have to be able to consent. So they have to be able to make their own decisions. They have to have their own decision-making power. So we can work through any type of issue that we can with the medics on scene, but if they're not able to consent, unfortunately, we're not able to offer our services. Now, we do have, for that being said, for language barriers, we have interpretation services for up to 250 languages, as well as American Sign Language. But for seniors specifically, if they're able to consent, they would communicate with us, we'll just do the best we can to communicate with them and get that consent so we can take care of everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think one other thing to mention is that when he mentions the field activated things, we're still sending an ambulance or someone from the fire department out there, but they have the ability to ask them, we can let you talk to an ER doctor right now. And like I said earlier, they call us, we have, one girl calls us now. She's like, I got a toothache. Can you just transfer me to the doctor? So we have them, we have people who are using it regularly now, and that's that we don't have to send a, tie an ambulance for them.
I just want to say thank you. It's an excellent program. I witnessed it when I came over one day. You have a fantastic team. I just love the way that our county as a whole continuously innovates to make sure that we're giving great services to our residents. So thank you very much.
I too would like to just say thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything that y'all do.
Well, again, yeah, again, thank you for welcoming us into your community and trust in us to take care of your citizens. We really appreciate it. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to make sure that the public understands what is the cost to the county for this program?
Go ahead, guys. I'll let you all answer that.
So the previous program that we were using was costing $200,000. This program is completely free to the county, and this service is better than what we were using before. So it is absolutely free to the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is presentation recognizing Parks and Recreation's homeschool program. Jonathan?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Today, we are presenting to you our homeschool program. We wanted to make sure that we highlighted some of the great things that we're doing with our homeschool community. And we do have them here today with us to take a picture afterwards. But a lot of people don't realize that we do have programming for our homeschoolers here in Henry County to provide them an outlet while they're doing their studies at home. And they get that social aspect when they come and engage in our programs. But I want to bring up Mr. Thomas White, who is our Deputy Administrator of Recreation, who oversees this program, and he'll tell you a little bit more about it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me up here again. I really appreciate it. Today, I want to turn your attention to a very special program. We have over 100 programs between recreation services and athletic services and Parks and Recreation. That requires countless hours of work, sweat, tears, and dedication. And I want to bring up somebody with me that's going to stand here because I promised her she didn't have to speak, Tina Foose. So she's our... I also made her promise that she wouldn't cry while we were standing up here, but the battle is being lost already. Please. Tina, a year and a half ago, I reassigned her to be over recreation programming, specifically the homeschool programming. All of our programs have one goal, and that's to create a community for people that may not have that community. Not everybody plays sports. So we try to bring them something, a place that they can call home, be they a child, an adult, or whatever age that they want to claim. We try to make sure that they have a place to go. And Tina has gone above and beyond my expectations with creating a place for our homeschool families to feel that they can be at home and together. She has started over a dozen different programs. Just tomorrow alone, she's got three new programs starting: theater, beekeeping, and gardening. And she's done all this on her own with the assistance of one part-time person that is helping her out. She's taken them hiking. She's taken them bowling. We just finished our creative writing and public speaking. Tina has done absolutely amazing. So you can see some of the photos. That'll scroll through while we're talking. This is from our public speaking program. That's when someone discovered a crawfish on one of the hikes. Yes, I did not put their face in there because the crawfish said it all. This is doing qigong on the top of Arabia Mountain. This is our homeschool open gym that we have on Tuesdays and Thursdays, every Tuesday and Thursday at JP Mosley Rec Center. This is our homeschool fishing day. We'll not talk about how much they caught, but I promise it was fun. This is our homeschool chess program that actually meets every week. This was our first program, I believe. And this is overlooking Panola Mountain and trying to see Stone Mountain in the distance. And this is a photo of our art classes. And finally, again, hiking at Panola Mountain. And some of these families are here to join us today. Could I just ask the homeschool families to stand? The reason, the reason I'm asking these families to stand and the reason that we're recognizing them is not only for the value of the programming, but because the chair just a few weeks ago at the state of the county talked about diversity. There's no greater diversity of ideas, ideals, thoughts, and expressions than what you see in the home. in the homeschool community because they all have different reasons for why they decided to homeschool their children. It could be cultural, it could be ideals, it could be thoughts. Whatever it is, they have decided to join together as one under these programs to do something that enriches their child's lives. And for that, we want to recognize them and all the work that they have done to make our homeschool programs a success and to make the lives of their children a success. Thank you so very much. We want to bring everybody up. Come on up, guys.
So can we get a picture with them?
Yeah, I didn't tell them what they were doing. I said it would be a surprise.
I think it's a lot of them, so JP, I think maybe it should right here.
All right, three, two, one, three, two, one, four, three, two, one.
Awesome. Again, we want to thank Parks and Rec for all of the creative things that they're doing to make sure that they are serving all our constituents in the county. So thank you all again. Next item is the consent agenda. If we could have the county manager to come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board and pillars of the community. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, April 15th at 6:30 PM. We have a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between Henry County and the City of Hampton to exchange property owned by Henry County located at West Main Street, tax ID number 02101002001, for property owned by the City of Hampton located at Highway 20 and McDonough Street, tax ID 04001048000, for the purpose of establishing Henry County Fire Station Number Five located in District One. Under DOT, we have a resolution awarding an RFQ number 25-35 to Roadway Asset Services LLC, RAS, as consultants for a pavement management program study in the amount of $197 per mile of specified roadway surface for roadway data collection fee and a $29,950,000 lump sum for production of deliverables. We also have a resolution authorizing speed humps to be installed in Fairfield Lakes subdivision located in District Two. Under Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution accepting FY 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG funding in the amount of $50,000 from the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, GMA. We also have a resolution adopting the 2024 through 2029 Henry County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Under E911, we have a resolution authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between Rockdale E911 Communications Services and Henry County for continuity of E911 Communication Services. Under Parks and Rec, we have a resolution approving a contract between Henry County Government and the Atlanta Motor Speedway LLC for the Hot Summer Fest fireworks event and the Henry Night Out trunk-or-treat event for the next three years at an annual rate of $238,000. Under planning and zoning, we have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Newbury subdivision on Mount Cornwall Road, Phase Three, located in District Five. Under SLOSS, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 2,695.50 square feet of right-of-way, a temporary easement of 4,662.92 square feet, and a driveway easement of 328.46 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 153 of the Seventh District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19 for the State Route 81 widening project parcel 30 T-SLOSS. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 3,815.68 square feet of right-of-way, a temporary easement of 1,188.22 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,0306.8 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 170 of the Seventh District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19 State Route 81 widening project parcel number 71 T-SLOSS project. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 6,540.43, 43 square feet of right-of-way and permanent easement of 3,103.50 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 170 of the Seventh District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-3-19 State Route 81 widening parcel number 72 T-SLOSS project. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,159.58 square feet of permanent easement and 415.24 square feet of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot 108 of the Sixth District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-2-4 through 32-3-19 Jonesboro Road widening project parcel 28 T-SLOSS project, District Five. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,870.72 square feet of right-of-way and permanent easement of 5,257.01 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 109 of the Sixth District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through 32-2-19 Jonesboro Road widening project parcel 37, District Five, T-SLOSS project. We also have a resolution authorizing execution and delivery of electrical distribution easement in favor of Georgia Power Company located in Land Lot 91 of the Seventh District of Henry County, Georgia, McDonough Parkway Extension Construction Project, T-SLOSS project. Under transportation planning, we have a resolution requesting $300,000 for the freight cluster plan grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission and committing to provide a $75,000 local match in fiscal year 2026. And then under the landfill, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement governing expenditures for state and local government costs for reimbursement of costs spent investigating and cleaning up the closed Henry County solid waste landfill, West Asbury Road, Phase Two, MSWLF. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Any questions from the board and items on the agenda?
I'd like to get Mr. Sam Baker up to explain what a freight cluster is and then, because we've had this come before several times the last several years, but then we got a grant to cover the majority of the cost. Let him explain exactly what that does for our community.
And Chair, Vice Chair?
So Madam Chair, let's get through the approval of the consent and then Sam will be the next item.
Okay. Was this, what now?
So the consent agenda, if he wants to hear this item as a regular item, you all need to approve the consent agenda first and then Sam can present the agenda item.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask him to remove it, but we can. That'd be fine.
Okay.
So we'll remove that item from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda. And so can I get a motion to?
I just had a comment.
Okay.
No, I just want to thank you for the two parcels on Jonesboro Road. I know every week I ask for a report on Jonesboro Road, so, and I know I have several of my residents in here who always want to know about Jonesboro Road too, so I just thank you for continuously working on it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with that item being removed to the regular agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, removing the freight cluster.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so that's the first, that's a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay.
Thank you.
Sam, now you could...
Question. Freight cluster plan is transportation planning specific to trucks or freight. It will look at a subarea of Henry County from McDonough to Locust Grove along I-75 and address two specific areas. One is freight-induced traffic congestion along the roads in that area and how to address all the unauthorized truck parking that is going on all over Henry County in light of the lack of or shortage of truck parking. So address truck-induced traffic congestion and unauthorized truck parking and make recommendations for our consideration.
So the $75,000 local match is going to be a shared cost, correct?
It will be paid by Henry County and then we will split the cost with the City of McDonough and City of Locust Grove.
Okay.
So it will be $25,000 each.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
So can I get a motion to approve this item on the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners and pillars of Henry County. While Jamie looks for the presentation, Commissioner, thank you for approving Jonesboro. You're going to see more of those as the coming weeks.
Bring them as fast as you can, please, thank you.
Thank you. So as you know, we started SLOSS six collections this month. You're going to be seeing a lot of this design. Thank you, Commissioner, yes, Vice Chair. You're going to see a lot of these projects coming for design, for approval. This is our first one. It's the design for the widening of Willow Lane from Bridges Road to Jonesboro Road. We're looking at four-lane in that and that's in District Four. As I mentioned, Willow Lane widening is a SLOSS six transportation project located in District Four. The purchasing department issued a request for qualification RFQ 25-36 for the design services of Willow Lane widening. We received five proposals and they were reviewed by a committee of Henry County staff and professionals. Trans System Corporation ranked the highest and provided the fee for the design of Willow Lane widening in the amount of $967,269. Funding for the design services is available in District Four SLOSS six project account. Staff recommends the approval of Willow Lane widening to Trans System Corporation. And in their proposal, they already started a concept. Now, this is the concept, it's not, it may not be like this, but this is of something that could look like, and of course, that's the entrance of the brand-new school that just opened this past year at Bridge Creek Elementary. I will take any questions.
Questions from the board? Here or none, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, citizens of Henry County, pillars of the community. This request in front of you today is to rezone 21.5 acre property located on Jonesboro Road just east of Chambers Road in District Five. The applicant, Pulte Holmes, is requesting to rezone the site from C2 General Commercial and O&amp;I Office Institutional to our five single-family residence to allow for a fee simple townhome development. Thank you for your patience. The subject property is highlighted in green and is surrounded by a mixture of commercial zoning and established residential neighborhoods. The future land use designation for the site is high-density mixed-use, which allows for residential densities, densities between eight and 20 dwelling units per acre net. The property was previously rezoned in 2004 from RA to C2 and O&amp;I with 15 conditions. In 2006, the county granted an administrative waiver to reduce the required landscape buffer. A prior rezoning request in 2023 proposed a mixed-use development that included commercial space, fee simple townhomes, and a traditional multifamily apartment component. That project totaled 335 units with a density of 15.5 units per acre and it was tabled by the board and later withdrawn by staff. The applicant is proposing a fee simple owner-occupied townhome development with a total of 174 units. This includes 63 rear-loaded townhomes and 111 front-loaded townhomes. All units are 24 feet wide and feature modern farmhouse-style elevations. The proposed gross density is 8.1 units per acre and the net density is 10.21 units per acre net, which is consistent with the high-density mixed-use designation. The property is located within the Highway Corridor Overlay District and must comply with all related standards. It is also subject to multifamily design standards in the Unified Land Development Code. These are comments received from various departments regarding the request. Based on the conceptual plan, the proposed development does not appear to present any major issues that would prevent it from moving forward. However, all engineered plans will be thoroughly reviewed by the appropriate development departments during the permitting process to ensure full compliance. On October 10th, 2024, the zoning advisory board recommended denial of the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request with the conditions in your exhibit books and on the overhead. I'd like to turn your attention to a couple of conditions, particularly condition number five, which states that no building permit should be issued to the property owner or developer prior to January 1st, 2027, unless the construction of Jonesboro Road's SLOSS widening project has been substantially completed as determined by the county prior to that date. And condition number six, which... And Condition Number 6, which states that the developer-owner shall dedicate up to 35 feet of right-of-way along Jonesboro Road as determined necessary by SPLUS for the widening of Jonesboro Road before the issuance of any land disturbance permits. Those conditions are important because we're currently trying to widen Jonesboro Road, and we're currently in the right-of-way acquisition stage. So, this just gives us an opportunity to get that right-of-way for free rather than paying for it. And I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll wait for questions, and this is a public hearing, correct, Stephanie? Okay. So, persons wish to speak in favor of the requests will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioners. My name is Garren Smith. I'm the Vice President of Land Acquisition for Pulte Group in Georgia, and I'm very pleased to present to you tonight this Chambers Townhome. You can see the style of the homes is farmhouse. This is very similar to a project we're currently building in Johns Creek. We've been paying attention to all the things that people have said, and we've tried to incorporate some of these comments into our presentation. As you heard, it was town, it was apartments at one time. Then there was almost a build-for-rent proposal at one time. Then there was townhome proposal one time. But this townhomes are a little different. These are a more luxury, open plan. I'm going to show you some of the interior features in just a moment. You can see there are both front-entry and rear-entry townhomes. Some of them are two-story, some of them are three-story with a loft. They're very flexible plans. You can see they're open concept. They have large entertainment area, gathering room, dining room, second-story loft, owner's suite, owner's bath. You can see the quality of materials. They have covered patios typically. Some have extended patios, and you can see the typical yard there. This is actually a picture of the one that's in Johns Creek, and that's from a different angle there. You can see we put a lot of landscaping into the surrounding. So, here's this site plan. You can see the darker units are the rear-entry townhomes. The lighter units are the front-entry townhomes. We've tried to keep with the density of the future land use map, but we don't think that we've overdone it at all. We've got pocket parks at the top along Jonesboro Road. There's going to be landscaping. That was an added comment recently by the Commissioners and some of the public. They wanted to screen that off. We've also agreed to gate the neighborhood. You can see on the left, the brighter green spot, that's a dog park. And then at the top, there's underneath the brighter blue square, which is an existing stormwater feature on the site. The site was previously developed, and that stormwater feature is part of the site. It's also serviced by the CVS at the corner. You can see right around there, those brown figures. One is the mailbox kiosk with the parking, and the other at the top is a pavilion with the fire, with the grilling station, kind of open area where you can kind of sit and collect and gather. So, those are the features of the site plan. Here's a view from Jonesboro Road with the proposed powder-coated aluminum fence and the landscaping. Behind it would be the pocket park. And then, this is an example of what the signage would be on the entrance feature. Pulte Homes is a local company. We're headquartered here in Buckhead. We've been very pleased to be a part of Henry County now for several years. We're excited about what's going on here, and we hope, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time to answer any questions you have or comments from the people that are here tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come to speak in favor of the project? Stephanie, can you reset the clock, please? Those in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Connie Snow, 426 Chase, Marion Way, and I'm with Conserv Henry. Before I begin, I would like everybody that is in opposition of this development to please stand. I am speaking on behalf of everyone standing in the over 2,000 signatures on Conserv Henry. I'm just going to point out a couple of things. Last week, I attended a P&amp;Z meeting for another development where I had brought up that the school board letter was addressed to a lady named Pam Powers, who coincidentally enough was the notary on the developer's application for rezoning. Wasn't sure if that was the same person, and I was told at that meeting that it wasn't, that Pam Powers also was a different Pam Powers and worked for a development company. But what's interesting about this one is the school letter is addressed to a Sarah Schrick at the Henry County Board of Education, and she is also the notary on the development application for rezoning for this applicant as well. So, I have some questions I want to bring up. What's going on in Henry County that our school board members or employees of the county are notarizing applications for developments? Because, I mean, that's a big coincidence, don't you think? That two different names hold the same notary as those that assigned or notarized those documents? I want to also mention that this is, if it is true that Sarah and Pam work for the Henry County Board of Education, they're county employees. And if they're using their notary to apply it to development applications, they are in violation of OCGA Title 45, Article 17. Notaries can't be a party to any transaction. By the notary being who the letter was addressed to and a county employee, that's in violation of law, and therefore, that application is null and void, and you guys should not approve it tonight, because if you do, you are approving another illegal development. So, keep that in mind. I ask that you don't approve this. As a reminder, we have over 20 schools failing in our county. We do not need more residents. Do not change that zoning from commercial, and do not add more people. And we need transparency in this government. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke Winfrey. I'm at 341 Laura Lane in District 5. I live right diagonal to this development. I am against it. We don't want the zoning to change, but if we're going to change it, we need more single-family homes, more conservation subdivisions, and also housing for seniors. A couple of things that I did want to point out are, are the gates going to be all around the community or just a certain portion? Are there going to be flock cameras at both entrances? We really need a pool and more amenities for these people. But again, we'd rather it stay completely commercial in O&amp;I if it has to. Also, the landscaping buffers are an issue. Anything less than 75 feet is a complete insult to adjacent property owners. So, we should really take that out of the code, because this 10 to 40 feet is really hurting other homeowners. We definitely need improvement to detention and retention pond aesthetics. All the fencing that is surrounding the detention and retention ponds is like really, really ugly-looking. It's always weeds, and everything is overgrown, so that needs improvement. Also, Jonesboro Road has already received an F rating for its level of service as of 2020, while appreciates staff including conditions to delay building permits until 2027 or until the widening project is completed. The project's slow progress makes 2027 feel overly optimistic. Also, Chambers Road, which connects to the corridor, is already overwhelmed by existing traffic without factoring in many of the developments that have already been approved. While we understand traffic alone may not be a legal basis for denial, public safety can be used. A road that is already over capacity and lacks proper infrastructure for the proposed use can be used for a legally justifiable reason for denial. This unchecked growth continues to pose a public safety issue. We are asking our elected officials to protect us. Growth may be inevitable, but the way it's happening now is completely unsafe. Our roads are inadequate. Our DOT and building departments are understaffed and overwhelmed, and our hospital faces three-day wait times just to get a room for emergencies. Our EMS and police response times are also unacceptable at times. Our jail is 7,000 warrants behind and also lacks capacity to house more individuals. All these factors create a public safety crisis. So, all we're asking is to hit pause, keep this O&amp;I, and keep us protected as citizens and your constituents. Thank you for your time.
If you can, if you can hold your applause until, please, thank you.
Angie Collins, Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club. The thing that was surprising to me about today's proposal is when this came before the Board of Advisors, reluctantly, I was hoping that we could keep it as commercial property, but when the community comes out and they say, hey, if we're going to do this, let's have some things in place. But what was surprising is, when we saw today's proposal, it's the exact same thing as it was back in October. It's like they didn't listen to anything that the community was saying. So, if we're going to have the community welcome this project, then the builder, the applicant, needs to really listen to what it is that we have to say. And I didn't hear that, and I was quite disappointed with that, because when you think about a property like this, I think they're going to be around 450, 550, I think, is what I heard. Some of the proposals that I didn't hear is, we had suggested no more opening, no entrances on Jonesboro Road, because as it's been pointed out, Jonesboro Road is definitely overcrowded as it is. What I didn't hear is the amenities. Now, when I looked at it, when I spoke with Planning and Zoning, I understood that there was some kind of, what they had for the money that they were asking really wasn't that attractive. I'm still thinking that if they're going to do it, they need to do something that's going to entice the people who move there to want to stay there and not just move there and leave, like a pickleball court, like a pool, like a walking trail. And they're saying, you know, I guess this is considered, because they said Alpharetta, this is the same thing that they were building over there. But what was concerning is, when I looked at the reviews for this Pulte company, they started at 1.0, and that's very concerning. To show the shiny pictures is nice, but when you really look at the materials, how sturdy is this? So, that was a concern. So, I'll yield my time, but I had a couple of more concerns, but that's really the gist of it, because right now, as it stands, I don't feel like we should approve that. Thank you.
I'm Mark LaRue. I live at 3331 Turner Church Road, and also representing the Walnut Creek Watershed Coalition. I'll be brief here. I've been before y'all many times. We object to high-density development of whether it's office and industrial, commercial warehouses. We really are pushing for conservation development, no matter what it is. And then I have a quick question. I assume there'd be a time to respond to Part B of this separately from now?
That's next. That's next.
Yes. Thank you.
My name is Malakai McCormick, 137 Himalay Way, and I will give a little summary here of information I found for this. As another one of my neighbors said, nothing has changed here in this petition. And so, according to the Institute of Transportation of Engineers, townhomes generate about six to seven vehicle trips per day. 174 townhomes is going to add us up to about 1,044 to 1,218 additional trips. Now, currently, as it stands, Jonesboro Road, according to the Henry County, Georgia DOT, is rated to hold about 30,000 cars currently today. This is every day. And as another neighbor said, we are at a level D of F to service when it comes to our rush hours. That's it for the traffic, and then I will zoom over to our schools. Currently, right now, we do have trailers at Dutch Town Elementary, Middle, and High School. All of these schools are over capacity. Adding on an additional 174 townhomes with the estimated two kids per household will strain the teachers even more, who are already stressed and limited in capacity as it is today because of the overcrowding that we do have. Our CCRPI scores do dictate this, and if we do add more to the schools, I fear that our 69.3s at the elementary, our 67.4s at the middle school, and our 82.7 at the high school for the CCRPI score will drop. Next, I'll move on to our medical services. As I stated, Jonesboro Road today handles about 30,000 cars per day, and the medical services will suffer from this. It will take between three to six hours during peak times for these vehicles, for emergency service vehicles to reach us. And lastly, I will leave us with, I read in the petition here that there was going to be a dog park, and there's going to be some green space here. And that green space is said to be 10 square feet. 10 square feet is the size of my and my wife's closet. And I only have 15 suits. The rest is hers. So, I don't think anything has changed here. I feel Pulte needs to come with better amenities and better housing, and I think you should not approve this today. Next time, I'll be able to give you a full speech. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. The time has gone out on the public hearing. Are there any questions from the board?
It is time. It is time to rebut.
Yeah. He still had time on the clock? From the, I mean, you can ask questions.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I think I had 6 minutes and 42 seconds, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. So, I was writing down, I was listening to everything everyone said, so I can rebut a couple of things.
So, can you speak up a little bit, because I'm having a.
Yes, ma'am, I can speak up a little bit. Regarding the notary issue, the woman who signed the notary works for my engineer, not the county. Regarding the fence, the fence will be surrounding the neighborhood. Regarding the flock camera, I'm going to leave that to the HOA. The HOA will hire a service if they want to, when we do that. We have different construction standards when we do it. We're building our material to protect our, the materials we have on site, but at the end, the HOA will decide whether they're going to have a security camera or not. There's reasons why you might want one and not want one. We did make changes to the plan, not so much in the location of the buildings, but certainly for that landscaping and the gate that I mentioned earlier and the fencing. That was not part of the original plan. It was, and so that was something that people had said to us that we were going to do and make that change, and we made that change, and I showed that change. The detention pond certainly does not look pretty today. It will be landscaped properly according to county code and fenced like it should be. That'll be part of the improvements that are going to go on in that location. The products that we're building are of high quality. The homes that we're selling, these exact same townhomes, you can go see them today. You can tour the model home. It's still open. It's still selling. The townhomes are selling close to $700,000 in Johns Creek. Now, they're near something. You can walk to something spectacular that's being built called Medley, and that's why maybe they're expensive like that. But in this case, it's a very similar product, is that, and I think you'll find that community very similar in its presentation, as far as the landscaping goes, and in terms of the kinds of passive amenities that are available there. And we're not having any problem selling those. I think that's all I had, unless you have any other questions for me. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to clarify a few things. So, a comment was mentioned about Sarah Schrick and Pam Powers. Sarah works for Falcon Design, and Pam Powers works for More Bass Consultant. Those are, you know, resident developers in this area. So, like, their names are on all kinds of documents, because they're the ones that make the application to the county for zoning. So, neither of them work for the county. They work for the developers. So, I just didn't want that piece of information to go awry, because both of them work for the developers who's turning in the applications.
Commissioner Lewis is in your district.
Thank you, Kamau. And thank you, everybody who spoke. I know with the residents of District 5, I know this has been ongoing since I've been a Commissioner with this development. It was actually proposed before I was a Commissioner. The original, and I know most of you remember, the original was apartments and townhomes to the effect of 324 units. At that time, we talked with the developer, and according to the wishes of the residents, we nixed all the apartments, which I was absolutely fine with. we nixed all the apartments, which I was absolutely fine with. Has gone back and forth, and I think Mr. Smith kind of iterated how many times it has gone back and forth about what we're talking about. I have some residents who said they want to be commercial, I have some residents who said they want to be single-family homes, I have some residents who want to say, want to be a mixture, I have some residents who say it doesn't want... My point is, I have at least 10 different variations of what people want to see or don't want to see. And so, in the end, we kind of have to narrow down, what is this going to look like in the future? That's kind of what we have to do. And so I kind of take it from a holistic approach. When we start talking about traffic, the county manager, that's why I talked to her, you know, I applauded her earlier today about the acquisition of right-of-way on Jonesboro Road. It has taken a long time. Everybody knows it has taken a long time. One of the issues with Jonesboro Road is, we are having to amend it after the fact. And what I mean by that is, everybody knows there's a lot of commercial on Jonesboro Road going towards 75. The problem with that is, there was having any development on Jonesboro Road, not just having any development on Jonesboro Road, not just this particular one, but any development on Jonesboro Road is going to be tied to the widening of Jonesboro Road. Typically, we have not done that in this county. There has not been any tie, there have not been any conditions about people building stuff tied to road improvements. We are doing that because we understand how important Jonesboro Road as a corridor is to this area and to the county in general. So with that being said, that's why that condition was specific, because we wouldn't even talk to Pulte until they agreed to that condition. You have to tie it in with the widening of Jonesboro Road. As you saw, one of the items that was pulled off tonight was the design for the second phase of Jonesboro Road. So this phase of Jonesboro Road takes from 75 to North Mount Carmel. The second phase will take from North Mount Carmel to the county line. So we're already working on a design for the second phase of Jonesboro Road because we want it to be smoother. And so, once again, with the other developments that have been approved on Jonesboro Road, as a condition of those developments being approved, we acquired the right-of-way. Why is that important? It saves us time. So now, we're not going to replicate the mistakes of the past. We are going to plan what we have in the future. So anything that has been approved on Jonesboro Road in the last two years, we have already acquired the right-of-way. So we don't have to pay for that going forward. So when, once we roll into the design phase and to the acquisition phase, it's already done. So I'll admit, just like everybody in this room, about the first phase of Jonesboro Road. It used to be a state road, it was turned over to the county, and it has taken years to get it going. Right now, that is specifically Rocky, that is specifically like his one true job right now is to get Jonesboro Road. Like, I literally, every week, that's all I talk to him about is Jonesboro Road. So, having said all that, another thing, when I became commissioner, some of the developments we had, and we've had this conversation, is about the cookie cutter look. We were getting all these same developments, had the same design, and I was like, you know, as a community, we deserve better than that. And so, that's the feedback that we have given developers in the last two years, and it has literally taken over two years for them to finally say, you know what? We hear you. We're listening. So now the developments you've seen, and I know some of the other districts, I know Commissioner Price had a couple in his district, fabulous designs, they're finally coming with what we asked for. Pulte, specifically, this is, like I said, I think this is the fifth iteration of this particular project, they finally gave us something that they're building, like I said, in Johns Creek. These are the kind of designs and developments that we've been asking for, and they're finally, developers are finally giving it to us. So I know people, some people are upset and they don't want it, but we're trying to be thoughtful and playing with what we're doing. We're tying it to the development of Jonesboro Road, having Jonesboro Road wide. The gentleman who came up, and I love that he came up with data, I appreciate that, I like data. He came up with data to say how many trips and everything. That's the level of thought that we're taking when we start looking at stuff. And so now, we know that by tying it to Jonesboro Road, we will have the capacity before anybody can even move in here. It's going to take at least three years before somebody moves into here. At least three years. So I know a lot of times, we think of development as, they approve it today and it goes up tomorrow. It doesn't quite work that way. There's a lot of things that have to take place for them to get it here. So saying all of that, I am comfortable with what they have proposed. These are very, very high-end townhomes. I think the price is going to be 450 to 550. It's not going to take anybody's property value down. We are addressing the traffic issue, making sure that it's tied to the development of Jonesboro Road. The folks have a right to build on it with what it was currently zoned, and they could have done that. They could have built, they could build all sorts of stuff that we would have no control over. This is something that we actually, to me aesthetically, is going to look good for our community, and I'm okay with that. So having said that, if I have any questions from the other commissioners, you go right ahead.
Any questions from any other board member? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just want to be able to say to our constituents, we have to be mindful when we come to the mic and we say things that could harm other people's lives. We must have our facts, we must have our facts when we come before speaking about other people. I will say with our school board, anytime someone is moving into an area, the first thing they check for is schools, okay? I work in the schools, and it's very disheartening to have our own community just really say negative things about our education, knowing that we have educators that are working extremely hard. And some of you, I've noticed you flood the county, but I don't see you going to the school board, getting the facts, where that data, how it was compiled to be where it was when it was presented. I ask you kindly, if you're going to do this, please attend the school board meetings, speak with your school board representatives to receive the facts, because y'all, this is our community. Our community. And if we're going to fix it, we have to work together. We as the board, we cannot control what the school board does. But I live here, I work for the schools, dedicated to our children. So all I'm asking, if you would please attend those meetings, set up a direct meeting and receive your facts, because you cannot continue to come to a mic and speak untruth. And I really hope you guys hear that, that's coming from my heart. But we cannot do that. We have e-splas for our schools, that means they can expand. That's why all the land is there. So again, I'm going to leave you with that. Please get your facts before you destroy somebody's life. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a comment too. I'm the newest commissioner on the board, and it's just disturbing. A few weeks ago, there were public comments made about the issue of having a pickleball court and how it would disturb neighbors. Then tonight, it was complained that this development didn't have a pickleball court. So one public comment, you know, you're complaining about the pickleball court, and then this one, you're saying that it should have a pickleball court. And I just think, you know, some people, for whatever reason, just come to fight. And so I think we need to, again, just, you know, consider not just our own personal preferences or desires, but the community as a whole. There may be things I may not like personally, but because I don't like it personally, it doesn't mean that it may not benefit someone else. And so, I just want to make sure that we understand that we don't turn this into a personal battle or personal fight, because if I have a problem with the amenity, then I need to have it all the time and not just when it's convenient. So I just wanted to make that statement.
So, you know, thank you, Commissioner Robinson, for your comments with regards to the schools. I have a question for Kamau. Do they get a letter from the school board saying that capacity is there for the schools?
The schools don't provide a letter about capacity. They just give you what they expect or project that number to produce, but it's not about capacity.
Okay.
It's just how many students they expect to come from this development.
Okay.
And the way, so when they get those letters, the school board, and we work with them as well, they get updates on every development that's coming so they can properly plan on their side as well. So we're doing a pretty good job about communicating well with the school boards.
So the school board is planning also, as we are planning?
Yes, ma'am.
To make sure that we can meet the capacity of students?
Yes, ma'am.
Students' needs. You know, I hear a lot, Commissioner Robinson, about failing schools. I'm going to have the superintendent come and speak about that because one criteria can make a school a failing school. You can have children with disabilities whose scores are low that can make that school a failing school. You could be in one subject area that could make that school, but it doesn't mean that the school as a whole is a failure. And that is what's disheartening, to get up and talk about our schools when we have students that are doing amazing things and that accomplishing a lot, teachers are doing amazing things, and then we want to hop on the negativity of what's going on. And so it's the same thing over and over again. So how about let's praising what we're doing here to help our students succeed? And, you know, Commissioner Lewis, I know that this is in your district and, you know, we have people that are anti-development, anti-dissent, anti, you know, whatever. You're here and you don't want nobody else to come. We want to lock the door and throw away the key. And I think that that in itself is selfish as well.
Any more?
Go ahead.
Okay. With that being said, I move to approve this project with all conditions.
Got a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda is a moratorium for residential zoning applications. To start.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. All right, as the chair mentioned, this is a public hearing for the consideration of 180-day moratorium on acceptance of conditional uses for conservations of divisions and residential reselling applications. This moratorium will extend the current prohibition from April 15, 2025, through midnight on October 12, 2025. This proposed moratorium is being considered to allow the Board of Commissioners sufficient time to receive, review, and implement forthcoming land use recommendations regarding changes to the Unified Land Development Code to ensure the zoning code is aligned with the county's 2045 comprehensive plan. I would like to note that any application that was received prior to the moratorium being in place will continue to go through the process of zoning. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, correct? Public hearing persons wishing to speak in favor of the request have 10 minutes to come forward and speak in favor of the moratorium for residential zoning. Next, the same for those that want to speak in opposition of the moratorium of residential zoning.
Heard Commissioner Lewis say that he liked data, and heard other commissioners say they like facts, and yet I have stood before the zoning board and the commissioners and given you facts about 90 miles of degraded streams in Henry County lakes that are degraded. There's all kinds of information out there. The Atlanta Regional Commission has provided recommendations to the county on stormwater improvements, on projects that are impacting drinking water reservoirs, and yet the county didn't even recognize that when they were approved. There's a lot of data out there. The Georgia Department of Wildlife Resources has a state wildlife action plan that they completed in 2015. It's being updated as we speak. Imagine this, our little, and I have some information here, our little Walnut Creek watershed is ranked by the Division of Wildlife Resources as being a priority watershed of moderate global significance. The facts are here. This is from DNR. We need to stop this piecemeal development of all of these projects coming up here. We have the Atlanta Regional Council making recommendations, DNR. We have statewide basin management plans that EPD puts out. There's a plethora of information out there. And my question to the county, I'm in favor of this, but someone needs to be taking all of that, looking at it, and coming up with real wildlife corridors, coming up with real stormwater management plans that are regulation. You can have all of these advisory entities, but it comes down to the local governments to embrace that information and implement it. So that's, I'm in favor of this, and that's what I'm asking the county to do. To take a broader look at this, take what's out there, there's plenty of help, there's plenty of organizations that would assist. And when we do these conservation easements, to have as part of our planning, our land use maps, wildlife corridors, not parks, parks are great, I'm talking about places that are left 100% natural. So I'm in favor of this, and during this next six months, I hope that the commissioners will embrace all of this other data that's out there, and let's improve Henry County. By the way, this state document projected that by 2050, 82% of Henry County would be developed. That's unacceptable, it's not sustainable. The citizens want better than that. You've heard them at many meetings talk about wildlife, preservation of habitat, green space. So let's move this forward, let's really do something, because there's all kinds of advice out there, but it's up to us collectively to take all of that and put it into something effective. So I'm in favor of this, and I hope the county starts broadening their scope a little bit. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition have 10 minutes. Okay, so that concludes public hearing. I'd like to call for a motion to approve. Or is there any questions from the commissioners?
Only questions. I would move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
County manager, did you have any comments?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. I do have a couple of comments for this evening. On Monday, April 21st, at 1:00 PM, we will have the ribbon cutting for the North Mount Carmel Recreation Center. And we are, yes, yes, yes. We are beyond excited. I will tell you that every staff member wants to be assigned to that center, and so we are really, really excited. I do want to, and I know we'll say this during the ribbon cutting, but I would be remiss if I did not publicly thank Lynn Planchon and Jonathan Penn and Donna Holder and the entire Parks and Rec staff for delivering a project ahead of schedule, on budget, in a very, very nice facility. And I just, I am really, really elated and so happy about that. Also, later that afternoon, we will also have a joint town hall meeting at the new rec center for District Two, for District Two and District Five. It will be Vice Chair Robinson and District Five Commissioner Lewis, and this meeting will... Robinson and District Five Commissioner Lewis. And this meeting will be specifically regarding legislative updates, um, from the Georgia General Assembly, um, as the session has ended. We will have several members of our state delegation in attendance, and we just want to invite the public to participate, um, in that town hall meeting. And then, on Saturday, April nineteenth, at eight, eight A M., we have opening day and a ribbon cutting ceremony for updates at Cochrane Park, which falls in Vice Chair Robinson's District Number Two. So, just wanted to make sure that the public knows that. Um, that was certainly one of Vice Chair's priority projects on day one. And again, Jonathan Penn and his entire team has been working very diligently, um, to make sure that we're ready to deliver a project, um, for Cochrane Park. I know there's more work to be done, but we are in the phase one of what that looks like. And then, that same day, Commissioner Robinson is very busy. There's gonna be a jazz concert at Village Park beginning at six P M. The weather is going to be beautiful on Sunday, so we hope that everyone comes out and enjoys in the festivities. And again, this is our Henry County Parks and Recreation Department putting on another stellar event. Also, this past Saturday, there was a stellar event at Nash Farm Park. J P. tells me there was probably thousands of individuals who participated in our Easter egg hunt. I understand that there was a helicopter dropping eggs from the sky, and we were really excited about that. So, thank you again, Jonathan Penn and the entire Parks and Rec team. And now, I want to recognize someone who has already left for the evening, but our Public Safety Director, Mark Ammerman. This is his last board meeting, and he's already left for the evening. Um, but his last day with Henry County will be on Thursday. So, I invite not only the board, who's already been invited, but the public to join us as we celebrate his retirement, um, from Henry County Public Safety. He will sorely, sorely be missed. Um, he's actually gonna be off tomorrow, welcoming a lot of friends and family that will come here and celebrate him on Thursday. And then, his official last day is on Friday, which the county's closed, so I think he aligned it that way for some reason. Um, but he did share with me and the team that he is going to miss Henry County, but he is only a phone call away. And so, um, I do want to publicly thank him for his service to Henry County. I believe it's thirty or thirty-three, I can't remember, but it's somewhere between a three and another number. Um, but we just want to thank him for his service and all that he's done to push our Henry County Police Department and definitely transition it to our Police Chief, um, in good hands. So, thank you, Public Safety Director, Mark Ammerman, um, for your service to the county. Other than that, I had other comments on the severe weather last week, but I think we all know about that. Um, I was out of town, and I believe a lot of our Commissioners were out of town, but apparently we got some pretty bad weather. And our emergency management team has reminded us to make sure, and I'm gonna get it right this time, that we download the Regroup app, um, because that will help to notify when we have potential, um, warnings or information that the public needs to be made aware of. Madam Chair, this concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you so much. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment? That's correct. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the minutes for March the eleventh and March eighteenth, uh, B O C meeting. Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay. Upcoming events, May sixth, at nine A M., is a regular scheduled B O C meeting. May twenty-eighth, at six thirty, is a regular B O C meeting. And, uh, I need a motion for us to move into executive session to discuss property acquisition litigation. Got a second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries. We, we will reconvene after executive, after executive session.
Can I get a motion for us to reconvene, uh, from executive session?
Motion to reconvene, second.
No motion, the second, all in favor. Okay, I need a motion to approve the affidavit.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor. That it, Stephanie? Okay, all right, mean the judge.